To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silent reflection. We again have the loss of one of our Amherst family. On Sunday, Dave Clark, who is the chief crew chief at central maintenance, died after a lengthy illness. And during his many years of working with us, he made sure that our buildings and grounds were in top shape and everything was running well. Not only that, he was a very good friend and colleague. And we mourn his loss and we send his car condolences to his family. We just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. This is our public hearing. So we will have the public hearing first and then we will actually recognize visitors wishing to speak, which we have none. So and then after our public hearing, we will go into our regular business meeting.
Right. Mrs. Conley is here to present the public hearing on our 1617 school year budget. As we've talked for months now, you know, this budget really isn't about next school year. We're looking forward to 1718 and 1819 when we know there are some factors that we need to keep an eye out for to make sure that we can maintain consistency with our programming and staffing. So this year, the budget came together nicely under Dr. Frazier's leadership, which we're thankful for. And as we move forward, we're keeping an eye through some very diligent planning on years two and three in our three-year plan to make sure that we can maintain that programming we're so accustomed to. So, Mrs. Conley?
Okay, thank you. We are discussing tonight the 1617 budget. As Mr. Pennella said, we work in multi-year fashion, so we will be looking ahead to two years thereafter as well. So we are happy to report that the gap elimination adjustment has been eliminated for good. And for Amherst, you can see here from this chart, since 2010, 2011, when the state imposed the gap elimination adjustment, Amherst specifically has lost over $8.8 million. And it just ended with 1516. It will be no more for 1617. The revenue side of the budget we'll talk about first. And these are the different categories of revenues that we have here in Amherst. The first one is our property tax levy. That is based on the tax cap formula. For this past year, CPI was at 0.12 percent. And the tax-based growth factor for Amherst was just over one. So we don't have much growth in Amherst. For 1718 and 1819, we're making an assumption, and this may be a little aggressive. So as we go through this particular year, 16, we'll keep an eye on this and we'll modify it as we get more information. But we are assuming 1% CPI and 2% CPI respectively for 1718 and 1819. We also have pilots or payments in lieu of taxes, and those are based on current agreements with the IDA and the assessments on those particular properties as we know them when this budget was adopted by the board. We also have county sales tax. We do get some sales tax from Erie County due to lower gasoline prices, Canadian exchange rate not being as favorable for our friends coming over here. We've seen a reduction in those receipts because the sales have slowed. However, Erie County does continue to perform better than other counties. So we're very fortunate in that regard. Community Ed is our before and after-school programs that we run at our elementary schools, as well as we have some community ed programs for our students in the athletics area as well they can participate in. So we have trended that based on past performance for the upcoming year. Interest income, unfortunately, what we are seeing in our own personal bank accounts is also happening here in the school district. Interest remains low. We're really be, we're behind where we should be. And it's going to remain low in speaking with bankers in the area. State aid, that figure is based on the adopted New York State budget. Again, the gap elimination adjustment was restored, so we're thankful for that. However, in state aid, you're going to see in the next chart that outlines the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet and the numbers, we're getting a bump up in state aid for this next year, 1617. And it's due to, number one, the gap elimination being restored. Secondly, for those folks that may recall, we had a 63% increase in our transportation costs this current year. So that is an aidable expense. So we'll see the aid begin in this next year, and then it'll level out. And then building aid, same type of scenario in there. We're having a one-year increase because we have the capital projects that are going to be starting to be aided and then to get caught up on. And then it's going to kind of level back out, and you'll see that. So those two areas are really what's putting us in a fortunate situation for 1617. With the property tax levy being negative, a decrease, that's problematic because it's restricting, reducing our revenues. And then with our costs going up, it could have really put us in a negative budget situation. So we're happy to say, you know, our programs will be maintained. And it's really a good position that we're in for this upcoming year. And the other revenues are also based on past performance. Those are things such as our building permits, building rental throughout the district. And you'll see here on this spreadsheet, the actual, the first column is the actual 1516 budget that was implemented, the projected 1617, and then the two years thereafter. Again, a lot of assumptions built into those last two years. Things will change. This is a fluid process. As we get more information, we adjust and modify. So you can see there from the state aid, we're going up from currently 9.7 to 11.7. And again, 800, about almost 900,000 actually was contributed to the gap elimination. We had an increase in our transportation aid. And then you can see it kind of levels out the two years thereafter to 12 million. And then our building aid area, again, it'll go back down to where it should be. It'll level out. So overall, our revenues are projected to change from current year to 7.75 percent for next year. And then you can see relatively flat for the next two years out. Breakdown of our revenues. Biggest source of revenue is our property tax levy. Secondary source is our state aid and building aid. The expenditure side of the budget, these are the main components of the expenditures. You can see personnel. Included in that is substitute costs, professional development, for any subs that are needed for those reasons, and any general staffing needs going forward. Some new state initiatives that we need to keep an eye on is the minimum wage increase that's supposed to be increasing to 1250 by 2021. So essentially, a 70 cent per hour increase each year. And then also, the state adopted a new family leave act, different from the federal FMLA, and that's to be implemented January 1, 2018. We're not exactly sure how that's going to impact school districts, where the funding exactly is going to come from. But it's something that we need to keep a pulse on. And as we learn more information, we'll of course communicate that. Benefits. This area includes ERS, or the employers' retirement system. We're anticipating, they've set the rates, so we are going to have a 15.5% contribution rate for 1617. The assumptions for the two later years keeps that flat. Now, we've been seeing a decline finally in those contribution rates. So hopefully, that trend will continue. And this may be a conservative assumption here, no doubt. But we will modify that if things come out differently. And then our teachers' retirement system, that rate is at 11.72 percent, and that will hold true for each year thereafter. Health insurance, we are self-insured, so we are anticipating an 8% increase in our health insurance. And our workers' compensation, we are part of the Erie One BOSI's group, and we are going to experience a decrease in the rate of 7.29 percent. General support and instruction. We budgeted a 2% increase, and it also includes the capital outlay grant. And I'll talk about that in a later slide and what exactly that is. Also, we are going to have tuition increases for our out-of-district placements. So we have budgeted for those. Those are scheduled to go up. BOSI's, this includes an increased participation as well as a small cost structure increase in this area. It does also include strategic, a strategic planning that Mr. Pennella outlined in a previous board meeting, and the innovation lab at the high school are included in this area. So outfitting that classroom, as well as future year projections have been modified in this area based on past trends. So you'll see how that will play out for 1718 and 1819, potentially. Transportation, we have a 1.5% increase on our contract. We also pay for the fuel for those buses as well separately. We've been very fortunate this year with the fuel prices being low. Unfortunately, we're starting to see that creep up as well. And then we did do some reconfiguration of our 35 passenger buses this year. So that's going to be saving us some money. And we've also implemented that in the budget going forward. And debt service, that's based on our past and projected borrowings for our capital projects. That is however offset by building aid. And transportation, it's important to note, as I said earlier, our transportation costs went up, but that is also offset by transportation aid and the form of state aid. The capital outlay grant, touching on that quickly, that's for small projects up to $100,000. So that is appropriated within this proposed budget. It's limited to one per school district per year. It does require voter approval of the budget in which it's appropriated. We do have to have a certified architect do the work. And it is reimbursable though at our building aid ratio, which is currently 78%. So basically, we get $100,000 worth of work for $22,000 now. And then these are the projected expenditures and the numbers going along with those categories. So you can see overall, a 3.77% increase budget to budget in our expenditures from 1516 to 1617, and 3.3 and 4.16 for those other two years. And again, we'll continue to watch that as things change, and we will modify that. So the breakdown of our expenditures, it's typical for a school district to have about 75% of their budget consist of personnel and benefits. So we're right on target with an average school district in that regard. So the comparison of the revenues to expenditures, we do have to have a balanced budget that we propose to the community to vote on. So you can see the overall budget is $55,650,245. This is our concern, 1718 and 1819. We need to focus on those two years and the potential budget gaps associated with those. We're going to have, again, the one-year bubble due to the building aid. And we do have our increasing personnel costs that we're projecting. So we do have to keep an eye on this. So we could potentially have those budget gaps going forward. Some areas in which we were able to save in personnel, we had some teacher retirement salary breakage, and there's also some central office restructuring that we will be saving on. So this comes from New York State Education Department. And this is the fiscal supplement and this information comes from. So you can see the total expense per pupil, and it compares Amherst to a similar district like Amherst, and then the New York State average cost per pupil. So you can see we're operating very efficiently. $16,469 cost per pupil as opposed to $20,538 and $21,812. Our fund balance and reserves. So this is what we have basically in savings for simple terms. We are allowed as a school district to have up to 4% fund balance, and we are allowed by New York State law to have certain types of reserves or savings accounts. But those are very restricted. They have very particular purposes. So in the beginning of this particular fiscal year, 1516, we had just over $8 million, if you look down at the bottom there, in total. Because of the 63% increase in transportation costs, our budget last March after the bids came in, we found ourselves in a situation where we had a 1.9 million budget gap. The board was wonderful enough to appropriate some reserves and fund balance to close that gap so we could maintain our programs, not have to make any staffing reductions or any changes that would impact the students. So overall, we could, if we were to utilize that entire 1.9 million, and there's an extra $286,000, you'll see there from the second line, that's basically for outstanding purchase orders from the previous year that were carried over. So in total, it was $2.2 million. If we were to utilize all of that, we could potentially, and I stress potentially, because we always try to save where we can. This is a spending cap. We try not to spend all of it. We could end up with $5.7 million in fund balance and reserves at the end. In the past, it's been customary and a tradition here in Amherst that if the board appropriates fund balance and reserves, we try our hardest to not have to spend that, to try to roll it over. So that's why I stress potential. I don't want to scare anybody, but you know, that is a potential. Our tax history here in Amherst, going back to 97, 98. And if you average all of those years in budget to budget changes, as well as the tax levy change, so we had an average budget change of 2.88 percent, an average levy change of 2.37 percent over those years. Well, the CPI averaged 2.19 percent. So I like to say to everybody that, you know, the board really is cognizant of what's going on in the economy, and they try to put forth a reasonable budget and levy for the taxpayers. And this was even prior to the tax cap we were doing this. So how the tax levy will translate to your tax bills at home. So you can see there's three levels of assessment. And this is contingent on the assessed value of the property, as long as it doesn't change from current year to next year. The current tax rate, you can see in the second row there. So if you had $100,000 assessed value home, for example, you would have a current tax bill of $2,265. With the tax cap and what we're proposing to the taxpayers for approval in this budget, it would result in a tax decrease of 0.48 percent. So you can see your tax bill could go down, again, as long as your assessed value doesn't change, anywhere from $11 to $22, depending on the assessed value of your property. And it's important to note too, this budget as it is, just requires a simple majority vote to pass. So that gets us to the contingency budget. What if, for some reason, this budget does not pass? What would happen? Well, the board has a couple options. They could go immediately to a contingency budget in which all of these things would be imposed. They could put out a budget for a revote. It could be the same budget. It could be a modified budget. But without a doubt, if it does fail two times, we have no choice under New York State law. We have to go to a contingency budget. And what that means is that the tax levy cannot be greater than the tax levy for the previous year. And there's an unintended consequence there of the no-tax reduction with the situation that we're in with the tax cap, CPI being so low. We don't have any exclusions this particular year under the tax cap. So potentially, under the contingency budget rules, the district could levy a tax greater than what we're proposing for 1617, because it would be the same as it was for this current year. But the downside to that is the following. There's no public use of buildings and grounds. There's no new equipment purchases that can be made under a contingency budget. No student supplies can be purchased under the general fund contingency budget. No non-essential maintenance, no capital expenditures except in the case of an emergency. And there's no change in salary for certain non-instructional, non-unionized employees. So what have we done over the years to contain? You know, you saw that slide a few slides ago showing how Amherst is very cost-effective. So what have we been doing? Well, back in 1415, Governor Cuomo required school districts and municipalities to do a government efficiency plan. And the requirement with that was to demonstrate 1% savings in either shared or cooperative services that we've done, 1% savings of our levy. So you can see our levy is about 33 million. So about $330,000 would have been the requirement, rough numbers back then. Well, what we did was we showed our shared services of nearly a quarter million. You can see down there at the bottom. But then we went into more efficiencies, what we did. So we were able to show to Governor Cuomo that Amherst, we saved over $2 million, far greater than the requirement of $330,000. So again, something we should be very proud of. Some of our accomplishments that we've done in the district. We've had ongoing collaboration with local universities and colleges, UB, for example. We've had upgrades to our security systems. We continue to expand our summer school opportunities for our students. Instructional technology, including upgrades to our infrastructure in our hardware and software. Ongoing curriculum writing and professional development. We continue on with our capital work. We have the design of the new district webpage, new district logo and identity kit, and student success. We could go on and on and on. Mr. Pennella asked me to kind of scale it back a little bit. We could really brag. So for the Board of Education, we have two Board of Education seats up for election. Ms. Lori Goldhawk and Mr. Dominic Vivalo are our two incumbents, and we're happy to say they are running again. Thank you. And we just asked that everybody comes out to vote May 17th, always the third Tuesday in May for all schools across New York State, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, High School South Gym. And we're asking folks to vote on the budget and our Board of Education candidates. And then absentee ballots can be obtained from these custodians.
Tell me just like about the 8% increase in health insurance. Where is that? How did you determine that?
Well, we work with our third-party administrator, Premier Consulting, and they base that on past claims that we've had here to date. And then they put a trend in, because we have a balance, of course, of time for this current year. And they apply a medical trend that's per the industry, healthcare industry. They also base it on our stock loss insurance and what they think those changes may be in our stock loss for any claims that exceed a certain amount. It's like an extra level of insurance that we have. So that's what we get from them. And then we implement that into our budget based on their recommendation.
I have another question then, if no one else. On the personnel savings, could you be more specific about the central office restructuring? Like where did the $100,000 come from?
Yeah, we had some retirements, obviously. We had Doug Wolfe, our technology director, retire. We had the former superintendent retire. We are going to be having Mr. Wile, he's going to be retiring as well. And there's some, just, you know, thinking of maybe how we can restructure things. It's an estimate at this point.
So so far, like the $100,000 isn't so much restructuring, because we're not restructuring or eliminating any of those positions or combined. It's more just breakage from the old superintendent to the new one, or?
No, we are. We're restructuring. We're not replacing Mr. Wolfe. And as a result, meet Ryan, our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Technology. Once he's appointed, we're going to merge curriculum and instruction under that umbrella because we have very good support with Mr. Watson and the technicians. So we felt like it would bring supervision under a central location to help move forward instruction.
Okay, thank you. And then for the teacher retirement salary breakage, I mean, so there's no reduction in positions at all in the district then? It's only from retirements?
It's mainly from retirements. There was one reduction in the area of social studies, and that was based on class sizes. So that one position will not be replaced. All the others were. And so that mainly is from the breakage, the majority of that number.
Our philosophy has been a little bit of a shift recently. Our goal when we have vacancies is to try to, when we need to, with a $1.8 million projected gap, look at attrition at every opportunity we can. So we don't have to reduce through reductions or layoffs or, you know, for lack of a better term. So anytime we've had an opening, we've done a pretty thorough analysis of the position that's happening in all positions and where we can not replace the position. Our goal is to do that until we have better projections moving forward.
I just say like so that it's clear, like that the social studies position in the middle school changes the dynamic in the class sizes and whatnot in the high school as well. Because what that means is that someone from the high school goes to middle school, and then to replace that person, someone who was formerly teaching reading now becomes full-time social studies. Someone who before was teaching required English classes now has to go into mostly reading. So there are fewer, just so you know, the board is aware that there's a ripple effect, so that it doesn't affect just social studies, but then it affects other, other classes, and that it would affect class size. So and I think in the future going forward, when you think about that, you should understand that, that there'll be ripple effects for class size, not just in that particular discipline. If, if it pulls from other disciplines, if it affects those, it'll change those two. Just so you're, you know, just so that it's clear, like what are the effects, so that you guys are clear. What are the effects?
Thank you. I can assure you, we have thorough discussion about all the impact of all the positions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you. So as I stated earlier, now we're going into our regular business meeting. As I stated earlier, there were no visitors wishing to speak. So we'll move on to record special committees. And we have Lori Goldhawk to speak to us about superintendent evaluations.
Yes, the superintendent evaluation committee has met a couple of times. We have worked very closely with Mr. Pennella to ensure that he is comfortable in approving of the evaluation tool that we will be using going forward, which is from NISCUS, New York State Council of School Superintendents. And they have a very comprehensive tool with a grade rubric and, you know, really wonderful details around it. And I believe that a couple of people have seen it. But the additional benefit is that there is an electronic version of this tool that has been developed by a local firm that really makes the tool fabulous. You know, highly interactive, very user-friendly, allows for self-evaluation and different pieces. So we're continuing to look at pricing structure on that and viability for its use. And, you know, we'll make sure that everybody has an opportunity to look at the tool and prior to approving it, obviously, for use.
Is it adable?
That is something that's in process, actually. The local company, PLS Third Learning, is working with both Erie One and Erie Two BOSI's. They've gotten it approved through Erie Two BOSI's to be provided with professional development. And they're working with Dr. Fusco at Erie One BOSI's to do the same. So it would be inadable. But it's relatively inexpensive, too. It's, you know, under $2,000 a year. So but it's, you know, it provides a great benefit to, you know, the amount of time and effort and energy that we've had to go through in the past. You know, this makes things so much easier and smoother. It's nice. Sorry, there's a lot of rambling.
What's the timeline in terms of taking up, getting some information?
Yep. We're waiting on more information about, or we're working on gathering more information about professional development opportunities, what Erie Two BOSI's is offering, what NISCUS actually offers, plus PLS Third Learning offers professional development in terms of how to use the tool, and also evaluating your superintendent, you know, and what goes into that. So we're gathering that information, and then we'll be able to make a decision.
It's very simple overall to use the tool itself. It's not difficult.
So are we thinking like by the end of the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Year?
Hopefully, over the summer, we can, you know, be implementing the decision and the tool, and then have us start using it in the fall.
Will we get some training at a board retreat, maybe, or something?
The benefit of starting at the beginning of the year, you know, enter our goals at the beginning of the year, and then the Superintendent can evaluate and, you know, add supporting documentation throughout the year, so that, you know, we're ready to provide our evaluation to the Superintendent at the end of the year.
Thank you. Sounds interesting. Thank you. Any other, no, any other committee reports that we missed? Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. I thought we were on to the Superintendent's report. Very excited for the high school update tonight. Mr. Pigeon's here with Mr. Wiles and Mrs. Abels to provide us with some information about some initiatives we have in the high school, some data analysis, and some communication tools they've implemented this year.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. It's always a pleasure to be able to shine a spotlight on the high school and the wonderful work of our faculty, my administrative partners here, Ann Abels and Tim Wiles, and just to shine a spotlight on the students and all the great work they do. Our goal tonight was to talk about how we're using data at the high school, as well as looking at the tool of Aspen, the learning platform we've put in place, which is now two years into its maturity, and to kind of highlight some of the great things going on in the high school and some new programs. We can jump right into the presentation, click your working, great. We annually have a goal-setting process, and it really starts with some very broad goals, and these have been very consistent goals for us at the high school for a number of years. Really focusing on increasing the percentage of proficiency and mastery on our Regents exams, so that's something we look at closely, especially with a close eye to how our subgroups are performing on our main core Regents exams, as well as really, really setting a high goal for the amount of our students achieving the Advanced Regents diploma. That's a distinction that we want a large number of our students to aspire to. This year, I think you're going to be pleased with a nice number. We've somewhat of an all-time high, 60% plus are achieving Advanced Regents diploma. So we want that to continue, and obviously, we always set a goal for that to be maximized, as many kids as possible can achieve that distinction. As well as keep a very close eye on our graduation rate. But I'm always happy to report that our graduation rate has been trending upward for a number of years, and we're very proud of the work that's going on in that area, because we want every one of our children that comes to Amherst High School to walk across that stage in their senior year and get a diploma in June. So that's kind of broad goals. Now, our BLT runs alongside of our goals as an overhaul in high school. Our BLT goals really look at supporting our district's instructional action plan, and that is our really guidance document for a number of initiatives in the realm of curriculum and instruction, as well as we've always set a goal to really maximize and increase our parent involvement and our parent communication and communication with other stakeholders, one primary stakeholder being our students. We want to enhance communication going back and forth with our students. So jumping right into, you know, our goals, on an annual basis, because we're in a secondary school and in a high school level, things do get departmentalized. And we really focus on goal-setting at each different department level and course level, because the courses are so different. I'm not going to go through every particular goal that each department sets, but it's important to note that they go through that process every year. Our departments that are represented by a Regents exam naturally, every fall, look very, very closely at the Regents exam from the previous year and going back data, to really look for strengths and opportunities for growth. It's also important to keep in mind at the high school level that many departments are not represented by a Regents exam. So they still set goals, and they'll look at some of their local, the data that they're putting together from their own local assessments, as well as just programmatic goals that they set for themselves to approve their program and what they're delivering to students in the program. Once we set those goals, you know, those goals have to equate it to some type of actions. And those actions really can be encompassed under a couple of levels. What can we do better, and what can we do more of that can help students? So, you know, on an annual basis, we set a goal to really enhance our instruction, our pedagogy, and one of our focuses this year, Mr. Wiles will talk a little bit about some of the things we were doing in the realm of pedagogy and instruction.
So as Mr. Pigeon mentioned, one of the focuses, improving our student performance is making sure that we're providing our staff with high-quality professional development. We're very fortunate on our Superintendent's Conference Day in January to not only spend the afternoon kind of working on some of the essentials of Aspen and Google, but we spent the morning working with a text called the Interactive Lecture, if you do have a copy right here, which was designed to provide the teachers with a professional outlook on instruction with a new lens. It's from the authors of the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Framework that we use to evaluate our teachers. So it's using that similar language that we've heard so often and that teachers are trained with, but it's taking instruction and looking at it through another frame to try to meet the needs of learners, which, as we can acknowledge, learners have changed and are very different from learners of the past, primarily because of technology. Information is no longer a commodity. Anything can be accessed with a fingertip. So what we wanted to do is allow our teaching to reflect the aspect of the classroom, where the kids can have endless amounts of information. What we wanted to do is organize our lessons in a way that helps the students analyze that information and break down what's really important, what's critical, because there's so much, we want to help them kind of digest it and figure out the important pieces. The second part to it is how can we get them to retain more of that critical information? And then the third part is how can we get them to develop tools to recall that at a later date to be applied in a project or a paper, or something along those lines? The second goal of this day was to make sure that we give the staff an opportunity to get out of the realm of their own department, to work with other teachers from other areas of the building, to trade ideas, to work with different protocols and practices, to make sure that they are communicating with their peers that they might not always get the opportunity to do so. So with this text, and we can go to the next slide here, we, again, we're working with the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Framework and the language of that framework, but doing so in what a lesson actually looks like. Now, the big difference in the Interactive Lecture in this book that we're presenting was the old-style practice of essential elements, where you introduce with an anticipatory set, where you have guided practice, and then where you allow the students to kind of exercise and practice on their own, and then you finish up with some kind of an assessment, that's not gone. Those are tried and true best practices. The idea of the Interactive Lecture was to take that and put those into mini-episodes within a traditional 42 minutes. So what you're doing is instead of taking 42 minutes to stretch that lesson out, you're taking it, you're organizing it into manageable chunks of five to seven minutes, where you connect to the content, where you introduce whatever the concept may be, where you give the students an opportunity to practice, and then you assess that. And you might have three, four, five different topics within each lesson that you've had the opportunity to go through. The advantages of that and that style of instruction being, you know that the students are at a level of mastery before you move on to the next section within that 42 minutes. You know who needs what, you know, you can easily take the temperature of where the students are to make sure if you need to spend more time on one concept before you move to the next. The other beauty of it is that it provides or recommends this idea of synthesize at the very end of the lesson. Take all of those little mini-lessons within the period and synthesize it to make sure that you're cementing that learning within the students. The big takeaway from the day is, there's two parts to it. The first one is that the teachers love the opportunity to not only meet with their new colleagues, which we've had a lot of new staff in the building this year, but also to work outside of their department, to see how something that's done in science can apply to any wish classroom, and to kind of revisit and reflect on and revitalize that desire to take on new initiatives within the classroom. The second part to that is, as an administrative team, we've collectively discussed, we're seeing, you know, the impact. Now, it's not that all of a sudden it's great teaching going on at the high school, that was always going on, but we're seeing the teachers taking what was presented in that workshop and applying pieces of that to enhance the already great instruction that's going on. We see the addition of these synthesis activities. We see the anticipatory sets that are having a lot of value, that are allowing the kids to connect to the material. So, again, it's one of those things where, as we're trying to increase student performance, we're making sure that we're backing it up with appropriate professional development opportunities.
All right, so now we're going to move into some specific BDI, how we, just some specifics that we've seen in the classroom. We have piloted two programs in the high school this year to help analyze, to help analyze our local data. The first one being iXL, which was used specifically in algebra and geometry. So from Sean Tanner, specifically his class, Algebra Remediation Lab, here is an example of a student's, a student's report, and you can see the name was blacked out, a specific, and it helps track progress and improvement of specific standards that are needed, not only to build a foundation, but also success from one unit to the next. These reports can be used in collaboration with a classroom teacher during common planning time, not only to help that specific student, but also to monitor and adjust classroom instruction. So here is one example. Another program that we have used is Castle Learning, and I'd like to highlight Dr. Weber's Biology Honors Class. And he has used this specifically with his honors, just to get a feel for it and to see how it's going. Here is an example of a classroom breakdown assignment by topics and by tasks, and he has the ability to adjust the percentage, whether it be 65 or 85%, and then weaknesses are going to be highlighted. Students can also do this individually, and his classes have really embraced, he's been quite impressed with the students taking ownership of their own instruction, which is really quite important at the high school level, because this is a stepping stone onto college, where in order for them to have success, they really do need to take ownership. So here's an example of data-driven instruction by teacher and by students, and what he has done is he has compiled specific remediation assignments based on areas where the student shows some weaknesses. And so the students go through and they do an assignment, and then they have the ability to print out a study aid, a vocabulary worksheet, so to help them move to the next level and to master those topics.
One of the other goals tonight was to really share with you the growth and maturity of Aspen. And Aspen, as you know from my presentation, was chosen in this district, not only as our student management system, but as a learning platform, because that's what we wanted from our student management system, was to have an interactive learning platform. So to share a little bit of that information of what that looks from a teacher's view, I'll get a testimonial from Jeff Tasta.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Tasta, an English teacher at the high school, and thank you for letting me give you a tour of my Aspen page. It's not flashy or animated, but it's useful. One of the things I like about the Aspen page is that it's dynamic. My AP Language course changes dramatically from quarter to quarter. The page gives me one place for the students to start, but a myriad of opportunities to provide resources and directions. The top of the page has remained the same, a constant reminder of why we're here and what our goals are. I use the next section to provide information on long-term projects each quarter. We're now into AP Boot Camp mode, preparing them for a very challenging exam. Once the exam is over, you can see where the section will morph again to include an outline of dates for our post-AP creative writing project. I also like that I can embed resources, references, and examples right on the page. There's no excuse for not having access to this information. I know other teachers take full advantage of this feature and have every handout, every PowerPoint and presentation, and I hope to get there someday. While I may not have every handout available, there are other ways that the Aspen page has helped me towards digital integration. Several years ago, I began having my students create blog posts and responses, and this year, I tried using Aspen forums to accomplish this goal. I also use my Aspen page as a digital hub. Google Classroom and TurnItIn.com have been wonderful for the distribution of digital materials. I also experimented with Twitter to push out assignment information and announcements. It wasn't a rousing success, but I learned a lot about how to better use it next year. The rest of these links are resources that will be needed for the entire year, and the list grows as the course goes on. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and have a great night.
So what we found and what our goal was going into Aspen was that the power was going to be, one of the powers was going to be in the Aspen teacher pages, and how those could be built. And over time, now into concluding year two, the teachers have really began to build a very robust learning platform that is something that students, parents can get access to, and really becoming, you know, the hub of learning in the classroom. So that is growing and maturing at a nice pace. Let's hear from a student perspective of how they use Aspen.
Hi, I'm Trudy Moore. I'm a junior at Amherst High School, and I use Aspen all the time. I use it primarily for checking on my grades, keeping with progress in each class. Teachers usually post what assignments are due, which is really nice, so we can keep track, especially when you forget to put it in your planner. The calendar also helps with that. Helps you see your upcoming assignments and activities for the school day. Most teachers use their teacher pages. They help, some post videos, like math teachers, and others just post assignments and different forms, say you missed a note for the day. A lot of people in our school also use the reminder app, so whenever you get a grade notification, you can see it immediately rather than having to wait till you get online at home to end up checking and see how it affects your average. Also through Aspen, teachers tend to send a lot of emails. It helps so then you can keep up with assignments and correspond with your teachers. Aspen also lets you view your report cards, so you can see your progress throughout the year and throughout the years. As the year progresses, we also end up putting up schedules, so whatever your current schedule is, along with your schedule requests for next year. So say you have about five APs like I do next year, it lets you see how they're all going to bounce out. Aspen overall has been a really great help to many students, whether that just be for checking grades, seeing assignments, or corresponding with teachers. Aspen is a huge part of Amherst's life.
So I think over time, we're really seeing a lot of use of Aspen, both with the teachers building robust, useful pages for students, and students getting accustomed to using it more regularly. And some of the great features of Aspen include that two-way communication and quick and easy email to parents, to students. Students can email teachers back as well as parents, so we're really excited about and pleased with the growth of Aspen, and we're looking forward to making it even better moving forward next year. In the realm of communication, one of the things that we added this year that we're very proud of is Tiger Times Online. Tiger Times Online is our weekly newspaper newsletter coming out of the high school, and we, it's really chock-full of wonderful information. One of the things that I take pride in and enjoy doing is filling that newsletter with spotlights from the students. And it gets rather lengthy, because our students do very, very well, whether they're winning contests, traveling to France and Italy, Quiz Bowl, trips to Washington DC, tours, classroom events, there's so much going on, that it's been a pleasure to really make that very accessible to the community and to parents. So we put that out on a weekly basis, it's a 24/7 document, it's available at all times, and excitingly, we're having at least 400 people read it a week, so that's very exciting. So, and the nice thing about Tiger Times is it's delivered, we have home-delivered, it's delivered to your inbox, and it's really there for you to take advantage of. The also, the exciting thing about that is that teachers have really bought into that, and more and more, my inbox gets filled with pictures and blurbs from things they're doing in the classroom, so it's growing exponentially, and we look forward to continuing to put that out for our stakeholders. We have a very mature Facebook page. We were pioneers in that area. I think our Facebook page is approaching five years old now, and we're almost at 1,000 likes. I was hoping to get there by that presentation, but we're a few short. The exciting thing about Facebook, again, is putting a lot of information out for the community and really spotlighting the achievements of our students. We're averaging 1,500 views a week, and a view means they've actually clicked on something and read it, so a lot of, lot of communication going on there. We're finding that anything we put out with a student picture and good news about a student is averaging anywhere from 500 to 1,000 hits. The record is held by not a student, by Duke McGuire, when he was put into the Baseball Hall of Fame for Amherst last year, he had 15,000 hits on that story in Facebook. So a lot of people are tuned in to our Facebook page, and that's exciting for us. We're on Twitter as well, and we have 427 followers there. Over the past three and a half years, we've put out 1,600 different tweets. The nice thing about Twitter is it's low maintenance, it's connected right to our Facebook account, so anything we put on Facebook automatically goes onto Twitter, so it's easy to maintain. We know that some folks are heavy users of Twitter, so two points of social media that we're getting information out to our stakeholders in the community. So two points of social media that we're getting information out to our stakeholders in the community. And next slide is our website. We know we're very proud of the work we did leading up to building the website. I'm focusing just on our particular page here. The whole website's been wonderful. As you can see here, these are, this is the usage of our website. And if you compare last September of 2014 to the opening of our new website, you'll see that we're averaging around 5,000 to 6,000 hits a month on our website. And you can see from September of 14 to when we launched it, we almost doubled our viewership on the website. So we're very proud of that. It's proving to be a wonderful tool to feature what's going on at the high school. And, you know, we'd like to highlight the work that goes on there. You can't see that very well, but our high school webpage alone has 370 subpages. So it's a daunting effort to keep that up to date. And that's with retiring a bit 30-some through the rollover process. We take pride in making sure that's up to date, timely, good quality information. And now with our new website, it's very easy to navigate. So a lot of good things going on in the realm of communication. You know, in a nutshell, I think we are always proud of the work that our faculty is doing. My partners, Tim and Nan, do a wonderful job. And we think, you know, the high school is really a wonderful place for the district and we're very proud of our students and all they achieved at the high school. So at this time, I would thank you for this annual opportunity we have. And open the floor if you have any questions.
I have one question and it may not be fair to ask and you can refuse to answer, but do you know who our commencement speaker is this year?
I do know. It is Jeff Myers from Buffalo News. He's also a community member and we're excited to what he can share. So we're looking forward to that.
Great, great. Thank you. Looking forward to that.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always a pleasure. Thank you very much.
And so we are on to new business. Do I do a motion for the new business?
Make a motion that we accept new business items G1A through I, G2A through I, G3DFG and I. Lots of I's?
A lot of second S's.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving agenda items G1A through I, G2A through I, G3DFG and I, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. And in our audience, we, let's see, where are we here? Okay, 2A, we have the appointment of Mr. Schoenfeld. And we're happy to welcome you to our community. Mr. Schoenfeld comes from the Lockwood Schools. He's been there since 1993. And he will be our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Technology and...
Everything else.
I mean, yeah. We're very, very happy to have you. And we were just talking that last week I got a tweet from, or a text from one of my friends who's a teacher in the North Kirk, Junior High. And she said, "You're stealing our principal." And I said, "Yeah, do you like him?" And she texted back, "We just sung your praises." So I hope that our friendship is still there after today, my high school friend and I. But we're very glad to have you and look forward to working with you. And you start on Monday, so welcome.
It's a tremendous opportunity and I really hope to work with all of you. I have gained a great sense of the community and people that care. I'm looking to join in and I'm glad throughout the interview process, which was very rigorous, I was myself and that resonated with you and I think I can bring a lot. Again, I have to learn the landscape, but once I understand that and under the leadership of the Board of Ed and Mr. Penala, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you in the best interest of this community.
Great, welcome.
I just wanted to make note that we are accepting donations from the Amherst Alumni Foundation, the Amherst Appeal. That money for those grants that were awarded came from the money raised through the Show Us Your Stripes event. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that, you know, these are some great opportunities to be using that money for. We have another event coming up this fall.
Next October.
Yep.
So great. We'll be looking forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, all right. Do we have any follow-up action items? All right, then do I have a motion to convene to executive session?
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding the appointment status of a particular individual and corporation.
Do I hear a second? All right, all those in favor convene to executive session? Motion carries and we are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.